I'll get there.
With our work session this evening. And that is council interview, city council interviews for the vacant city council seat. So this evening, we're going to start, we're going to go in the order of those that were re, how they were received, the applicants, we have four Suzanne. Okay. I'm gonna let you explain if you would.
Yes, we counsel, when I first gave you the packet, you had five applications, five letters of interest. We, the city, we did our due diligence, we checked residency and I had one candidate that did not meet the residency requirements. So this evening, you're down to four council applicants. And the order that they received, that I received the applications in were Harvey, DeZellum, Hoing and Lockman. So that was the order that they got to me from.
Thank you Suzanne. So we will begin with Ms. Harvey. For an interview and if the other three of you would please go with Kip Wiley to the conference room. He will be joining you while you all wait for your turn. Thank you.
I think it's all gone. I think it's boxes.
Oh, just the boxes, okay. Good evening Carol. Thank you for joining us this evening. Would you like to just start off and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested?
Well, this is now my second time at the podium and I will, and, and all of you have received my letter of interest and I have to apologize, it's, it's kind of hard to cram sixty-seven years of life into a one-page letter of interest, but I, I hope I gave you some highlights that you can digest and possibly use in your decision-making process. For those of you don't know me, my name is Carol Harvey. I've lived here in Woodland Park, Park almost twenty years now and in the state of Colorado for about thirty. Part of the reason for that thirty-year tenure is because I spent a couple of tours of duty at Peterson Space Force Base as an army officer. So Colorado has become home for us. And I think you probably won't see me leave unless it's in a pine box or an urn at my husband's discretion, whatever that might be. As I said, I did spend twenty years on active duty. Prior to that, I had three years working with the state of North Carolina as a county planner. I also worked as a substitute teacher with special ed kids. About nine months prior to going on active duty and my first active duty tour was in lovely South Korea. But in the army, I was an intelligence officer and my tours ranged from tactical to strategic, retiring out of Belgium. Brussels, Belgium at NATO headquarters and that was, I think, the highlight of my military career. I thoroughly enjoyed that tour. But we decided to come, my husband and I decided to come back to Colorado and we chose this as our hometown. So what happens in Woodland Park and what happens in, in Teller County and what happens on the front range is very important to, to the both of us and certainly to me, or I would not have volunteered to seek an appointment to the planning commission about fifteen years ago. And in that time, I was certainly naive about how a community or municipal government works. But that was baptism by fire and I thoroughly enjoyed my time on the plant, planning commission. Some of you may know, I chaired the planning commission for a couple of years and during that period of time was our first update to the comprehensive plan. The master plan for the city had probably been on the shelves for about twenty-five years and had not been updated and so two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, the community came together and put together a new comprehensive plan and I served in a capacity that I was able to help bring consensus within the community for that plan and actually do a lot of editing myself because before the comprehensive plan got published, our consultant kind of petered out and somebody had to take up the reins and so I did take that responsibility on. And then right after that experience, I decided to run for city council. And I think I served with, I know I definitely served with Kelly during that period of time and I think Catherine, well, our, our tour together on city council, I call it a tour, was actually the last nine months. So I did not bore you with some of the other jobs I've held over the years. I've been a DJ, I've been a bartender. Yeah, I was a DJ, yeah. So at WTOE, the big toe. AM, of course. I did work as a bartender and that was because I didn't have the same physical attributes that the waitresses did in the particular club that I worked at, but that was back in my, my past, but I've, I'm now very happy to say I spend my time being grandmother and great-grandmother to six great-grandkids and one great-new grandbaby girl. You've already heard my spiel before, but I stand here for your questions.
Thank you Carol. Counsel, questions for Carol. And please just jump in Terry. All right, we'll start with Catherine and go down the line. That's perfect. What are your thoughts on a continued mill levy reduction, permanent or temporary and why?
I would not consider a permanent mill levy credit. It's not actually a reduction. I think that that needs to be assessed on a year-to-year basis. Who knows what's going to happen with a budget year? I mean, this, we're I think we're in a recession, is possibly not defined as a recession. But there's certainly inflation that's going to impact the budget process and budget discussions this year. So there, when we can give that break, not only to residential homeowners, it's a very important credit for business owners as well. I wa, I would like to be able to evaluate it every year.
Thank you.
My questions are going to be a little less technical. Suppose you went to sleep tonight Carol and a miracle happened that solved all of Woodland Park's problems. What's the first thing you'd notice in the morning?
No more potholes. I, you know, what are our problems? I think I would have to ask, what, what would I be looking forward to seeing in the morning and I think what I would hope would happen tomorrow morning, if that were the case, is that we had a bypass. And the congestion that travels through our city had been lessened, but otherwise, it's a pretty darn good place to live.
Jeff.
What do you see is our most important issue or issues plural, if you'd like, facing the, the council and our city in the next cup, years, year or so?
I, I, I think I might have touched on this the last time I was here at the podium, but all of us need to be cognizant of water resources. Every project that comes before the planning commission and the council has that staff evaluation on, is this project going to be able, are we going to be able to support it with the water we have at hand? So that would be my, my primary concern as a council member. As a community, I think always my primary concern is safety and, and security of our residents.
Carol, thank you. Appreciate you putting your application in. You mentioned the comprehensive plan. How do you feel that should play, what kind of role should that play in planning in on council? In making decisions about land use and water?
Well, you just hit on the, the, the most operative phrase and that's land use. That's what the comprehensive plan is about. It's about land use. It's not about law enforcement. It's not about, you know, other aspects of, of the city ordinances. By state statute, the planning commission is the entity that's responsible for pulling that together. It is their plan. But the council does endorse it and individually, all of the council members should participate in the process to update it, which should be on a ten-year rotation. But it's, it's, I've heard this phrase before. I'm not sure I really like it. It's an aspirational document. And all of us should use it to judge, what did the community foresee in our future in respect to land use and zoning? And every asked aspect of land use and, and that's how I would see it. It's a measuring stick. It's, it's a metric for the council to evaluate ongoing projects, new projects, old projects. And because of the process that the community went to through to come to consensus on what we collectively felt was the most important in the next ten years. I think it does reflect the community's desires. It's, it's, that's the danger of our strategic plan. That really is the council's document and doesn't necessarily reflect the entire community's feelings about our vision for the future because it doesn't have that same in-depth look that the comprehensive plan had with the assistance of consultant.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, since everybody has already asked you all the good questions. My question, and it's pretty pertinent to me, would be, as you can see, there's a lot of new people upon council. And you being a leadership in your past occupations and everything. How open-minded would you be in like mentoring to the other council members?
I, first off, I think everyone who is on this dais right now is where you should be at this time in, in our community. I think all of you have already demonstrated that you have a desire to make this the best community possible. There are aspects of municipal government that take a little bit of learning and as I said before, that first year I was on planning commission was so naive about everything from parliamentary procedure to open meeting laws, which are very critical. And now I understand that. I, I certainly have the scar tissue and am willing to share the lessons that I've learned. I, I guess you could call me a brave beard, but I don't see myself in that respect. I can just tell you what my experiences were and the things that I learned the hard way.
Counsel, any, anyone else have more questions? I'm gonna wait for you all. I've known Carol for a very long time. If there's anything else that you have that's burning, please ask it. I know the answer to this, but like you, sorry, but like you said, some people don't, so I'm gonna ask it. The, let me see what, oh, can you explain why you resigned from your elected city council position in two thousand and nineteen?
There were a number of reasons that that happened. That was about four months short of my term. That was my second term. And this is another one of those opportunities of a lesson learned. In two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen timeframe, the Chamber of Commerce sponsored a town hall regarding the deer population in Woodland Park, not Teller County in Woodland Park. And I, then Neil Levy, Mayor Levy asked me if I would go and represent the council and I, it was a very enlightening presentation by Colorado Parks and Wildlife about our deer population here in Woodland Park at the time. And I have not seen any statistics in the last couple of years, but I will tell you at that point in time. The deer or the dodo-fawn ratio was the highest in the state, if not the southwest. And that was a concern to those that were worried about a healthy mule deer population in the county and in the, the city of Woodland Park. There were about a hundred people in attendance at that town hall meeting and I, I was there to learn. I wasn't there as an instigator certainly. And I got called to the front of the, the, the group of people, about a hundred people, as I said, in attendance and I asked, I just asked questions of the audience and I said, well, what is the problem? And most people who raised their hands and spoke said it's, they worry about collisions with deer and cars. They worry about the health of the herd and possibly exasperating the, the wasting disease among the herd. And, and I asked about, I just simply asked, what are some of the solution sets that you would, you know, suggest? And this was just a group of people who showed up after work and really had no agenda other than to hear the same presentation that I was there to hear. And because you asked this question Catherine, I'm gonna give the entire background. The group, I asked at one point in time, would this particular group of people consider a lethal means of taking care of the herd? There were, as I said, a hundred people. I bet ninety-eight people raised their hands and said yes, and actually came up to me afterward and said that they weren't in favor of hunting themselves, but they knew in order to preserve the herd that there would have to be some measures taken that probably were not going to be popular. Break, break, a couple of months later, come back to the council and Colorado Parks and Wildlife made a presentation to the council. And asked if the council could officially address this, these issues that had been identified in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. And at that time, again, naive, the mayor suggested a task force. And Mayor Case was on the council then. And because I was the person who went to the town hall, guess who got stuck with the task, not stuck, asked by the rest of the council by consensus to lead up a task force. And here's what I learned. Task forces are very difficult populations of cats to herd that way. They're not like our commissions or boards which have bylaws. They loosely have to follow our, our parliamentary procedures. The task forces loosely have to follow open meeting laws. We would all be hard-pressed to force them to do that, but they are established to research a specific issue. And bring recommendations to the authority that established them. And so at a point in time, we decided as, as a city council and a city staff to establish that task force to look at what could be done at that time was considered a problem with the herd here in Woodland Park. I chaired it. There were two subcommittees. I think there were twenty-five to thirty people who participated. I do not remember all of the folks that did participate. But I know that there was a cadre of about ten people who poured their heart and soul into that effort. Some of them were looking at very practical ways of education. Education seemed to be a, a, a solution set. Some of them were looking at the less popular option of a lethal means of dealing with the herd here in city part, in the city limits. What I did not do as the task force chair was make sure that both of those subsets were coming together and sharing their ideas. One of the subsets kind of went rogue. They, they did surveys in the park. They, they contacted people out of state and promised that they could come and speak to the city council at a ten thousand dollars a pop. There were a number of things that happened as it came to the point of time when Mayor Levy and the council at the time wanted to see at least a draft of the solution sets that this task force was putting together. I then began to receive physical threats via my personal email account, my city email account. I think it was on social media. I am not a real expert at social media, so I didn't really follow the social media story. But there were threats, not to me personally, on my personal email, they were threatening my dogs. That's like threatening my grandchildren. But at any rate, as we came to the point in time when the presentation was going to be, be made to the council by the two subsets, the two subcommittees of that task force. The mayor contacted me the night before and said, we're not gonna do it. So he said, it's just too controversial. He's getting too much pushback from some people, some individuals in the community. I don't think there was a community-wide disagreement about it. He said, it's just not worth pursuing. As I said, I was the chair. I didn't do the legwork on this one like I had done on the comprehensive plan back in two thousand and ten. I simply brought the, the subsets together, took their documentation and put it into a single document to be presented to the council. That document was, someone corrupted the file. The Dropbox that we had created was deleted, although it was a password-protected Dropbox. There were efforts by some parts of that task force that were dead-set on keeping it from being presented to the community. Again, now knowing what I know about a task force and how to make it a productive effort. I did not do that as the chair. I didn't rein in those folks and say, hey, we're all in this together. And some of you are coming up with great ideas and some of you are coming up with ideas that are detrimental to the entire effort. When the mayor said, not gonna present it, I was, I was obviously upset because I know how much work those folks have put into it, both sides. Good people with very, very passionate views on, on wildlife and, and why we live in this community and the beauty of wildlife. And I said, I, I can't, I can't come in and, and make, make, pretend that this didn't occur and sit where you're sitting now and ignore what had happened with those folks. Yeah, I was pretty upset about people threatening my, threatening me, threatening my pets. But more importantly, I was disappointed at the time in a very good friend of mine who's no longer with us saying, yeah, I'm sorry. I know they spent months and months and months on this. We're just not gonna hear it. And that's why I resigned.
Thank you.
You asked, you got it.
I did, but you know, there's, there's a lot of rumor mill in town and I wanted.
That was five years ago. I'm surprised that people.
Yeah, and I wanted, I wanted. So that's why I did. I just wanted people to understand the whole situation.
My advice to council going forward is, don't ever use a task force. Hire a consultant and let them facilitate as a third party.
Anything else, counsel, for Carol? All right, Carol, thank you. If you would go with Kip and Kip, if you would bring Dawn DeZellum back in, please. Counsel, while we're waiting, I just want you guys to know, this is not an HR-type interview and so we don't have to ask the same questions. We can ask whatever question we like. So feel free to, to conduct yourself as you wish, as long as you're nice. Dawn, thank you for coming. Welcome. If you would just give us your name and town of residence and just tell us a, a brief bit about yourself, please, and why you're here.
All right. My name is Dawn DeZellum. I've lived here in Woodland Park since about ninety-one. And I am just very concerned about our community and I'm involved in it. I'm currently on the planning commission, the Parks and Recreation Board. I was a chairman of a section of the last comprehensive plan. I was on the last charter review committee. So I, I, I look at it as a very important part of being involved in my community is if I'm gonna live here, I need to be involved.
Thank you. Catherine? Okay, so many have said we are a divided community. Do you agree? And if yes, what do you see as a way to reduce the division?
There are many things in this town right now that, from when I moved here in ninety-one that have caused, or I have seen divisions in the community. Some of the things that have come up in the last several years. The last school board election. The issue of terrorists. The tiny home community when it was being built. So there's been a lot of things that have come into our town that have caused divisions. Some of it's been caused by miscommunication, lack of knowledge. How do I see us fixing it? It's gonna be a long, hard road, but the thing is, is that we all need to be respectful of each other. Listen to each other's opinions. Weigh them and agree to disagree if we have to. But I think we can bring back some of those, heal some of those divisions that we had in our community or we haven't in the community.
Thank you. Terry?
Hi Dawn.
Hi Terry.
Give me an example of a time when you had to conform to a policy with which you did not agree.
Boy, this just sounds like a star interview at work.
I was, I knew I didn't have to explain to you. Situation, task, action and result, please, sir.
There's been a lot of them. I had one at work one time where they put down a new policy that required us to do something that I did not agree with. And it was something that I personally did not agree with. It wasn't that I didn't think it would help the situation at work or anything. It was just something that I was morally opposed to. And I sat down, had a discussion with my boss and explained to him, you know, this is why I didn't want to do this. And, and, and basically it was kind of a simple one. It was having to work on a day that I consider I need off on a Sunday. And there was coverage. At that time, I had developed a management team that could more than adequately cover me in my position for, to allow me to have Sundays off. So I sat down, had a discussion with my supervisor at the time. And we, I, I explained to him how, you know, if things could be covered in that there'd be adequate coverage. Competent coverage. And after sitting down and listening to me, he changed that policy. It, from where the unit manager had to work on Sundays to where it was an option.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff?
Hey Dawn, you had mentioned a few things that are, you know, currently more divisive in our community than maybe we'd all like them to be. From your perspective, you know, how do you see, you know, getting some resolution to some of these things? And I know you'd mentioned in, in your statement, you know, working together and things like that, but I was just wondering if you had any more specifics around any maybe thoughts that you had?
Well, i- it's hard to pull people together to sit down and talk about things. One of the ways that can be accomplished, maybe where you don't have to sit down and try to bring groups together and have meetings and, you know, the turn into sessions that don't become productive. Is that while we're out in the community and people say something, you know, say something back that maybe might help soften their point of view to, you know, say something maybe positive to their negative and see if they'll accept that. It seems like you see a lot, especially on like social media. One person will say something and all of a sudden thirty more drop in. But if we all maybe started, you know, taking and looking at it constructively and being civil about it and bringing up you know, a counterpoint of view and being civil and having a discussion about it instead of just having a session over it. I think we can start getting some of that maybe taken care of. But you know, i- it takes an effort and it takes a community to do it.
Thank you Dawn.
Hey Dawn, yeah, hey, thanks for applying. You, you stated in your letter to council that you've run for city council four times, four actual campaigns, I believe, right? Yep. And I believe this is your third attempt at an appointment, I think.
Third or fourth.
Okay. You also stated in there. Okay. Um, you also stated in there, and this got my attention, of course. You stated in your, uh, letter that there are financial barriers to businesses that you'd like to remove. And I was curious about that. I just, I wanted to understand your thoughts around, um, those kind of barriers and what, maybe what they are even. I would.
Well, you know, up here, businesses, some of them live seasonally, basically. You make your money in the summer and you better make it because you got to live off of it during the winter. Uh, so anything that we can do to help out the businesses as far as being able to be an aid to them economically, and, and that may be just as simple for some of the businesses is maybe looking at the business license fees and lowering them. Looking at, um, maybe being able to reduce mill levies so that they're not paying as much on the property taxes to the city. So we, we just need to be creative and take a look and see what's impacting our, uh, merchants. And what can we do to help them out?
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Don.
So question would be for me would be is you have some visitors coming in, into town and they ask you, you know, what are some of the best attributes for this community? What is it that we can look forward to? What would you explain to them or tell them?
Picking out the, uh, natural beauty of the area and such. Um, one, I think they're going to find a city that if they need something as far as a city service or something, they're going to find a city that's responsive. That's going to take care of them and listen to them for the most part. I, I don't think I've ever had a bad experience dealing with one of the city departments. There's lots of activities up here that people can get involved in as far as, uh, parks and rec. Uh, clubs, organizations like that, that, uh, are active in the community. We have a great, um, uh, system of churches and stuff up here. So, you know, they're going to find things that I think most families are looking for in a community as far as that type of thing. You know, I've been up here since ninety-one and I would not leave. I mean, I've lived in many places and, uh, I never thought I'd live in a small town. I, I always kind of considered myself a city boy, so.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Sorry, I wanted to piggyback onto George's question.
Sure.
Um, I just want to make sure I understood the answer. So basically, um, you know, our charter does not allow us to incentivize business.
Right.
Or develop, or technically development, but we shouldn't probably incentivize business. We've tried that for the voters multiple times and it fails drastically. So you basically would like to reduce the mill levy permanently to help the businesses and reduce. I mean, and, and our business licenses are already at thirty-five dollars. So you don't want them to have a business license? Do you want it to be a dollar? I'm not, you know, just trying to.
What I'm saying is let's look for ways that we can help out the businesses. You know, I know that if I remember right, several years ago, we dropped the, uh, business license fee down to thirty-five dollars. Uh, so maybe it's time to take a look at it. Maybe we can drop it down to twenty-five. You know, with the situation we have now where every year the mill levy can be looked at. Maybe that's something we can look at. If we're having a bad year economically, again in the um, for businesses, maybe we can consider that as a measure to help them. And maybe if the two or three years of doing continually, maybe it can become a permanent one. Um, I'm just saying, let's be creative and take a look because I know we can incentivize for them. But, you know, let's do the same thing we should do for the citizen too and look for ways to be a benefit to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, counsel? Dawn, thank you very much.
All right.
If you would go with Kip and Kip, would you bring back Mr. Hoying? Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Hoying. How are you this evening?
I'm well.
Thank you for joining us and for applying. If you would just let us know your, um, your name, your full name and your town of residency. And then tell us a little bit about you and why you've applied.
Okay, um, Donald Hoying. I live here in Woodland Park, obviously. I've, uh, been a resident of Woodland Park for a decade now. And really interested in the future of this, this town. Um, I'm a lifelong committed resident. My wife and I literally looked all over the country. This is where we picked. This is where we're going to stay. Our boys are starting college next year, so right here in the state, so totally committed. Um, with the past few years, seen Woodland Park go through a lot of challenges. Would really want to see that, you know, it, it comes through and bring this, bring this community back together in a way that it hasn't been for a number of years. And also foster the development and growth of this community. So there's a place that's friendly for businesses, friendly for families. Have some ideas, which I imagine you'll have some questions on how we might move that ball forward, uh, but I'll, I'll, I'll wait on that. I, would you want me to go into my qualifications at all, or do you think that'll be covered?
That's okay. I think that's in your application.
Okay.
Um, we'll go to the council if that's all right with you.
That'd be great.
Catherine?
All right, so I love the mill levy apparently. Uh, do you believe we should maintain a two to three month unrestricted fund balance for emergencies? Or only have the Tabor minimum emergency fund balance of three percent? Understanding if the city uses any of the Tabor emergency funding, it must be replaced to the fund by the end of the calendar year. If yes, how do you plan to fund other emergencies if they become necessary? Examples would be a wildland fire, another pandemic, snowmageddon, active shooter, or any unforeseen disasters.
I, I don't want to sound flippant, but in my view, you kind of answered the question. Um, we live in a, we live in the middle of forests. We can get big snowstorms as we just experienced, um, wildfires are the, obviously the scariest risk. Um, so in a situation like that, I, I think it's entirely prudent to, uh, do more than the minimum in terms of save, saving for a rainy day and for emergencies and things like that. Um, so yeah, I would strongly support, uh, saving more than just, you know, the legal minimum.
Thank you. Terry?
Hi, Don.
Hi.
Tell us about a time, being as specific as you can, when you had to, when you were forced to make an unpopular decision.
Well, I had lots of opportunities in my prior job, so, um, I, I managed, uh, a number of large programs through the Department of Defense. I'm trying to think up, try to quickly get through some personal examples, uh, as well as some programmatic examples. A- as a, as a leader and a manager of these teams, um, I was, I gave people as much chances as I, as I could, um, as long as I felt they were, um, you know, trying to move the ball forward as they're committed to the, to the goals of our team and the mission. And in certain instances, people would demonstrate that they did not have the best interest of the team or the best mission at heart. Um, for me, that was like a light switch. At that moment, all I could think of was how I'm going to get this person off my team. Because they're a detriment. My team were stronger without them. So, uh, that was never fun, obviously not popular to the individuals affected. Sometimes these, these individuals were popular on the team. Um, but they were a detriment to the success of the team. And, and the other, uh, from a more of a program standpoint, um, so what I really liked about being a government civil servant is my job wasn't tied to my program. If my program went away, my job didn't go away. Um, so that was critically important, I felt to, I always had the freedom, the right to give what I thought was my absolute best advice. My best advice might be this program that I'm working needs, need to go. Uh, I never had to get that severe, but we, we, we cut, um, we cut large portions, removed contractors, um, that, uh, weren't performing and didn't have the best interests of our mission and the government. Um, and so, yeah, we, we terminated one case, we terminated a half billion dollar contract because it wasn't performing.
Thanks. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, so, um, do you see any project or facility or resource that maybe our community lacks? That if we had, might, might help us better draw in people and families and, and residents into Woodland Park?
I, I do. Um, are you familiar with the Catalyst Campus down in Colorado Springs?
No, I'm not, unfortunately.
So that's a business incubator. Um, think, you know, you've got a, someone who wants to start a business and they're like, great, I got a, I got a great widget. I want to build or a great idea I want to sell. Um, now what? Where do I have an office? Where do I get internet? Where, where do I get, um, you know, help with legal, with payroll, with taxes? Um, and so an incubator does that for us, a small startup business. So you can walk in with more or less a little bit of money and a great idea. And it's got everything else you need to, to succeed. And I think that would be a, a great addition to this town.
Who funds that? Who, who makes that possible?
Well, that's something the city could initiate. Um, we'd have to talk about priorities and, and how big you want to go. But yeah, and then, uh, we certainly would see grants. Uh, it, it would fall, it seems to me it would fall ideally into small business grants because that's what it's directly supporting.
Thank you, Don.
All right, thanks.
Hey, Don. Thank you for applying.
Sure.
Um, so you're familiar with the twenty thirty comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Can you describe, well, what are your thoughts on its usefulness and how it applies to planning, your current planning commissioner, by the way, um, how it applies to planning and how it applies to council?
Well, it's extremely useful. Um, you know, if you don't know where you're going, I guess any road will get you there, but a- as a manager, I, I always strive to have a distant objective. And whenever a question came up, I, I would see other, um, younger program managers and such struggle and they're like, oh my God. Everything's in play. I'm like, no. What are we focused on achieving? Does this decision move us closer to that or farther? If it moves us closer, that's the right decision. If it moves farther, it's the wrong decision. So that hence the importance of having a plan, having a, a, a long-term goal where you're headed. Um, this particular plan, uh, if I could change something about it, um, I think it kind of captures the as-is of Woodland Park. Um, we are largely a service, service-based economy. Uh, there's not a whole lot of production type jobs here, whether producing widgets or, or, or intellectual property. Um, and I, I think that's a weakness of the plan. Um, and that's something I'd like to, to strengthen.
Hmm.
It also aligned with the service, uh, focus. It, it talks about Woodland Park is a tourist destination. I'm not sure the, how viable that has really turned out to be. I personally think we're just too close to Colorado Springs and whatnot. I don't think anyone wants to take a vacation thirty-five minutes from their house. Um, doesn't mean we can't bring in people from out of state or not, but, um, you know, I, I think we, we're at a point where we need to consider, do we want to be a tourist destination or a place where, you know, families have jobs in their own community?
Thank you.
Hi, Don.
Hey.
In your time here, these is about ten years.
Yep.
What type of community involvement have you had since you've moved here?
Well, I'd start with, uh, Cub Scouts, being a down leader and then I became a back leader. Um, more recently, um, and as a voice with this school, you know, involved in that being, uh, watchdogs and, you know, serving the school. Um, more recently, it's something I never really expected, but, um, more into the quasi-political. Um, involved in the, uh, working the campaign for the school board elections and then, uh, supported the, uh, the election committees of, uh, quite a few of the recently elected members here. So that is, uh, it, it was interesting doing, particularly the school board, um. You know, I, I got out there and I knocked on about five hundred doors and I talked to, you know, well over a hundred of our voters. Had amazing discussions. Um, it would have been easy. My kids were already going to a different school. Um, it would have been easy to say, well, it doesn't affect me, but I, I couldn't. Uh, I don't know, something inside me didn't let that happen. Um, it was too important, even if it didn't affect me directly and affect this community. Was committed to supporting the community.
Now, in the, in the future, what, what would your thoughts be with working with some of the youths in our community?
Well, like, like I said, I've demonstrated, uh, an interest and willingness and, you know, activity and do, and doing that in the past. And so, um, that's something I'm, would have passion for, yes.
Okay.
Catherine, Terry, anything else?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Hoying.
Nothing personal.
Not for anything. Thank you. If you'll go with Kip and Kip, bring in our last gentleman, Mr. Lockman. Welcome. Thank you for coming and applying.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind just telling us a little bit about you and why you are interested in taking this position, please.
Sure. Um, my name is Eric Lockman and I'm an electrical engineer by profession. Um, I have about twenty-five years in electrical engineering from factory automation to embedded with John Deere to wireless, um, for like water districts and, um, gas and oil, um, and recent, most recently in internet of things. And so that brings all the controls and the technical side, the wireless all together. And so that's, that's my professional background. Um, I'm a father of four and, um, and so I'm raising my four children here. Um, I work from home, so I could live anywhere and that's, and Woodland Park's probably the best place we could see, we could find. Um, we traveled all forty-eight states with our family and, um, my wife's a, a Colorado native, and so this is really the perfect city, I think. It's, it's remote, but it's close to, um, the springs and, um, everywhere I go, I want to be a contributor. And so that's, that's really the reason that I'm, um, I've applied. That's why I ran. Um, and I'm solutions oriented. Uh, I have grease under my fingernails because I've taught my son, he can't, um, he can't afford a Mustang, but he can fix one and have one that way. And so we're rebuilding an engine and, um, I'm, I think of myself as a pragmatist. I, I, I don't just think of theory, I think of, um, solutions and how they affect people. And so that's, that's really the, the angle that I come from with everything that I look at. And so, um, I didn't really prepare anything, but that's, that's what I have. I'm, I'm ready for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Catherine?
Hi, Eric. Um, so what is our council form of government and what are Robert's rules of order?
Um, our form of government is, um, a home, home ruled city, so we, um, and we're a, a strong council rather than a strong mayor. And so that means that we have um, the council that, that decides on, um, on, on measures that go forward. Robert's rules of order are how you conduct meetings, um, how you, um, open and close, how you, uh, start motions and, um, and vote on things. And so that's, it's just that, it's the rules of order for a meeting.
Thanks.
Hi, Eric.
Hello.
My questions are soft skills, none of the questions. My questions are soft skills kind of the questions. So here's my first one. I have two for you. If I asked the person in your life that you're closest to to describe you, what do you think they would say?
Um that Eric's a servant, that um. Maybe almost to a fault. I I spend a lot of time helping people with things that pop up. I I. Kind of well-versed in a lot of different things from technical to. Mostly technical, I guess, but um. Yeah, I'm a servant, so I'm always willing to help somebody when when someone needs something.
I think my dad called that a jack of all trades and a master of none.
I've been called that, yeah.
Okay. My other question for you is. And I, we've had kind of had a conversation about this in the past, but. What is your typical way of dealing with conflict? I mean, give example.
The way I deal with conflict is try to understand people's perspectives and um. We have talked about that. A lot of people get uncomfortable about conversations that that they feel are. Political or um. Um maybe racy or whatever. I. I genuinely care about what other people think and where they're coming from to understand their perspective. Um we've been in the group together with um Braver Angels and went through those different steps, and my perspective is. You don't need those steps if you actually care about what the other person thinks. That naturally comes out of you, and so that's. That's, that's my perspective, and that's my, my way of dealing with conflict is. Where can we find that center ground? What what can we agree on?
He- hello, Eric, how are you this evening?
I'm well.
Good, good. Um I kind of have a s- simple question. Um be seeing as how you have an engineering background, um how does that? Help you make decisions? Engineers tend to be a bit weedy um at times. And so, you know, just curious at how your engineering background, you know, take kind of how you shapes how you make decisions.
I, well, it's, it's data collection and trying to, you know, trying to find how things fit together. It's looking at root cause, it's looking at. Uh cause and effect, those types of things. But at the same time, um. Engineers typically work with machines and with systems and mechanical things. When you're a council member, you're not working with machines, you're working with people and you're working with a population, and so you have to treat them as people and not. Not machines, and so understanding that. How does engineering um affect my decisions? It's that cause and effect, but it's not in a mechanical way. It's in a. Social economic way also. It 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 depends on what that question um. Or that challenge is, and so you have to deal with things differently based on what what they are, but they, in the end, they all affect people.
Hey, Eric, uh thank you for applying. So hopefully you're familiar with the twenty thirty comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Let's see, okay. Can you give us your thoughts on the usefulness of the plan and how it? Is to be applied for the planning commission and even here in council?
Yeah, so. Um I think it has like twelve different aspects from travel to utilities to um economics, tourism. That is really like the vision that had stakeholders come in and give input so that we had an idea and a vision of where we're going. And so that's what it should be. It should be that guiding light of of what, what the city should look like. It's not, it's not. A book of mandates, but it's kind of a vision that was created by. Council and um citizens to um to to kind of come to an agreement of what, what Woodland Park should look like. And which direction should we go, be going, so. That's the vision casting side of things, and so does it, does it match our vision? If we're going to go forward, does the next development match our? Our vision for twenty thirty?
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Eric. Uh question is, uh how involved have you, have you been? In the past couple of years within our community itself?
In Woodland Park, um not in the government or the the municipal. Parts, but um. I've been involved in. Outside of my, my, my four walls, right? So helping neighbors with, with um shoveling snow or. Um helping friends with off-grid solar that's not been working. Um I've always been serving in some capacity, but not necessarily. In the, in the, in the municipal realm, so um. Uh volunteering at church and doing a lot of different service, but not within the municipal realm. So I. Two or three days a week I've been serving the last two years.
Thanks.
Anyones else have any other questions? Catherine?
Sorry, one. Um back in two thousand and twenty. I'm sorry, back in twenty twenty, the um city council permanently reduced our mill levy from sixteen point two four nine to fifteen point seven five. Do you think we should continue to reduce it permanently or do as we're currently doing, which is to? View it on a yearly basis and with the current law allow a credit, but have it go back to what it is, is set at the beginning of each year?
Um I, I don't mind having it the way it is where we keep reviewing it because um because. We're in weird times where the economy is different, and so we need to be able to manage the city. But at the same time, I'm going to lean towards um giving that money back to the citizens. If and when we can, because that is not our money. That's the citizens' money.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, counsel? Thank you. Kip, if you would bring everyone back in, please. Suzanne, while he's doing that. Would you like to brief the council on what's next, or would you like me to?
Sure. I didn't know if you wanted to wait till we started the public meeting.
Oh, sure.
And then I could read everything.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Alright.
You're welcome.
It is six twenty-nine. Perfect timing.
It is. You guys kept right on schedule.
Good job, counsel. Yeah, let's stop and start over, yes.
We'll go into the public meeting.